To the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all.
So first on the agenda tonight, we have public comments. And we have several public comments. And I will start with, I think the phone call, Dr. Wiles is making a phone call now for the person to make the public comment. And this is from Karen Lewis. Well said, Dr. Wiles.
Okay, I have Mrs. Lewis on the phone. Go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Just a few brief statements. One, I wanted to thank you for continually, the board and the district, and Dr. Wiles for letting us know about the COVID-19 contagions or infections that happened. I really appreciate the information because as a parent, I can, information provides me the opportunity to make decisions, the best decisions I can for my child and for our families. So I definitely appreciate the openness. That makes me feel very secure. I believe that there's a comment listed on the papers tonight that was actually an email. After I received a letter saying that I was rejected from the Equity Committee. My feelings are still the same. So if the president wanted to include the president of the president, I thought. That's, that's the way I feel and I added. And in fact, I just checked the list. And in all honesty, and I wasn't going to bring this up, but I will really quick. If everyone on that committee is not capable of saying Black Lives Matter, they may want to consider not being on the Equity Committee. And if there are any questions on why I say that, I'd be more than happy to meet with anybody and have that discussion. The issue that I wanted to speak of tonight, though, was that I was concerned that there was only an advanced placement calculus class for students. And I think part of equity is allowing students that from disenfranchised or groups to be able to participate fully and equitably in opportunities. And by having only an advanced placement for calculus, that limits the opportunities for students. And I'm sure there are quite a few of the Gilderland students who are planning on going into college. And the majority of majors that I know of, with the exception of liberal arts or education, would require a freshman to have already had a year of calculus. But an advanced placement calculus may be too challenging for some students. So I would like to have considered those advanced courses also be available to every student that's capable of having a non-advanced placement level class. So that was really my comment.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lewis. Anything else you'd like to add before we let you go?
I'm sure, I don't have you guys on my computer right now, but I'm sure my Black Lives Matter comment raised some eyebrows. I am particularly concerned about, I don't know how to be anymore plain. I really wasn't happy about the comments about Haiti and African Americans. And I really think if you were going to talk about black people, maybe you check with black people before you do. That goes to one board member because he's, he's woefully ignorant on Haiti and why Haiti isn't a dire straits. Yes, they got their freedom. Yes, they were able to kick the French out and then they've been in debt since. So when we look at economics, you need to look at the whole picture. Especially if you're going to talk about black people, you need to at least be knowledgeable about it. And the other assumption is that everybody's Christian. Wasn't happy about that because not everybody is. So again, my trust in seeing my child and feeling that you can adequately educate him, provide a safe environment and respect his diversity doesn't exist. So unfortunately, I'm probably gonna, until he graduates, you're gonna have to deal with me. And that's about it. Thank you, Dr. Wiles.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lewis. We do appreciate your, your comments. Have a good night.
Thanks. You too. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. The next public comment is from Rachel Peraldo. The email says, "I have two kids in high school, a freshman and a senior. The time of class is truly frustrating, to put it nicely. I don't see my kids all day and except for a dinner break, it's back to their rooms for homework. I'm asking that the times for high school be put back to where it was or earlier. It's absolutely ridiculous that they have so much work and the time of class is such that I don't even have any time with them because the classes and the amount of work is ridiculous. These addresses matter promptly. No other districts have done this to their students. With ours, Mrs. Peraldo." The next public comment is from Olivia Chadwick. Can I just ask, if you're not speaking, can you just mute yourself? I get a lot of feedback. Thank you. There we go. That's a lot better. Okay, this is from Olivia Chadwick. "The dear Board of Education, it is so widely acknowledged that we are in unprecedented times that it feels a bit cliche to start this letter with such a statement. However, the statement remains a good reminder that flexibility and creativity are essential in all aspects of public education this year. We, as special education teachers at Gilderland High School, wanted to reach out to you with some concerns specific to our population of students. First and foremost, immediately pressing is the concern regarding the current spikes in cases. The staff and students at Gilderland High School, not just those in special ed, are concerned we will not be able to be with our families during this holiday season due to a late mandate quarantine. A mandated quarantine would require us to stay isolated even from those with whom we live. The regular emails regarding increase in cases in our district and the stress of trying to cover classes for quarantined or absent teachers during our planning periods, on top of dealing with the day-to-day challenges of providing inequitable education during a pandemic, are wearing on us and detrimentally impacting the mental health of us all. The mental health of our staff and students is paramount to learning. And in this current environment, mental health is rapidly deteriorating, which in turn is negatively impacting the learning of students. There's no substitute for traditional in-person instruction, but these unprecedented times are not typical. No one is operating under routine or typical conditions. When we prioritize in-person instruction for those families who still feel comfortable sending their children to school, we are creating inequitable access to education for students who cannot attend in person. Some of our classes only have one to two students physically in them for synchronous instruction and 20 to 25 students online. It would be beneficial for all students if we create a consistent routine rather than sacrifice the ability to have routine and stability by prioritizing the in-person instruction for the small proportion of students who continue to come into the building. We need to be realistic in our expectations of what instruction looks like this year for all students and recognize that it is different from what it has been in the past, whether students are physically in the building or online. Lack of consistency and the stress of uncertainty is preventing us from being able to create the routine so important for the success of all students academically and emotionally. When considering Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the second foundational tier of that pyramid, needs of security and safety are not being met in the current model of instruction. This makes it challenging for most and impossible for some to access the higher levels of psychological and self-compensate needs in the pyramid. We asked it, the board, to consider allowing us to provide a more secure and routine method of delivering instruction by going fully remote at the high school level for at least a week prior to the holiday break. Second, and equally important, is the lack of access that all students, but especially students with special needs have, to receive the help they need outside of classes. The current schedule of an eight-day rotation is challenging, I'm going to summarize this, is challenging to navigate for adults. Essentially, there's not enough time for special ed teachers to meet the needs of all students in all of their classes with the schedule and students are failing. The time before school is designated to collaborate with colleagues to try and collectively problem-solve ways is more successful. Parent meetings are often scheduled during that time slot as well, which further diminish the time we have available with students. It's some more about limited time available to support students. And this full letter will be in the minutes. As a department, we'd like to see the district take the needs of our most fragile students into consideration when discussing the schedule for the second semester. And I'll go down to the, there are two requests. There are two, there are more details and challenges that we'd love to address. However, due to time constraints, we would like to leave you with our two most pressing requests. One, please consider allowing GHS to transition to remote-only instruction for at least a week prior to the break. And two, please consider changing the schedule for the second semester to provide every, provide a day every week for students to receive one-to-one support from teachers outside of their traditional class time. We would like to close by thanking the board for all of the hard work that you do. We appreciate the challenges you all face. We would like to advocate for our needy students. And so, community, that our district values all members of the community. With respect, this is from the Special Education Teachers at Gilderland High School. And again, the full letter is in the minutes. It's lengthy, so I just want to sum it up. And then the last public comment I have is from Chantel Burnash, the mother of a Farnsworth Middle School sixth grader. Please share below with the board relating to Fazana Saleem Ishmael Memorial Scholarship. Fazana Saleem Ishmael was incredible Gilderland mom and wife who could light up a room with her beautiful smile. She was a community activist and dear friend to many. She was always positive, radiant, and made everyone around her feel special. Fazana spread kindness with her various volunteer projects. She was the founder of Jazz's Sun Birthdays, which provides birthday parties for children living in homeless shelters throughout the capital region. She was also very involved in anti-Islamophobia efforts and hopes to dispel stereotypes and build bridges. We lost a very special member of the community when Fazana succumbed to her battle to stomach cancer in June 2020. In her memory and honor, we want to keep her contagious spirit alive. This award will be presented to a high school student who has a passion for volunteerism and philanthropy. This individual will exemplify compassion towards others, positivity, and a desire to make a significant impact in the community. It is our hope that Fazana's husband, daughter, and son will have the opportunity to present this award to the student if they so choose. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about such a special lady and friend with you. That's from Chantel Burnash. And that is all that we have for public comment. When we get down, I had some comments regarding the special ed teacher's letter. Can we discuss that, I guess, when you come down to the COVID update on your? Oh, go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. So I won't pretend that some of those, Mrs. Lewis's comments weren't directed at me. To set the record straight, I think we can all agree that Black Lives Matter and the idea that people on our committee would oppose that statement. I'm not sure where she's getting that idea. And her comments about Haiti reinforce my point that I was trying to make that night, that racism is not the only factor affecting disparities between groups of people. So I actually endorse everything that Mrs. Lewis said in her public comment. And I'm happy to meet with her as well. If she'd like to discuss her concerns further. But, you know, to comment and publicly suggest that members of this board are not concerned about the safety of students in our schools, I think is inaccurate. Thank you.
Judy, did you have your hand raised? Is that by accident?
No, yeah, sorry. I was just, I only have Neil on the screen, so I was trying to get everybody.
Urgent to say, so I was just calling in. Next on the agenda is the budget development and I'll turn it over to either Dr. Wiles or Neil.
Thank you, Seema. As you know, this time of year, we normally are talking about budget development. And if this were a normal, non-pandemic school year, the district would have solicited public input on the 2021-22 budget at the November board meeting. And the board would have provided direction for budget development at this, the December meeting. However, as we all know, we're not even remotely sure what school will look like months, nine months from now. Will it be a return to teaching and learning as usual or will it take some other form? Will schools fully be able to reopen for in-person instruction without entering lingering concerns of the virus? Or will schools have to adapt by offering different instructional models? Will remote instruction continue to serve in some capacity or create greater educational opportunities going forward? These are all unanswered questions regarding our instructional model. In addition to that, we have to think about the fiscal aspect. Federal stimulus package is currently under consideration by Congress and that could result in additional funding to help schools. So will a package get approved? And if so, how will it impact New York State and in particular, our school district and school community? And will a second stimulus package follow? And that's been discussed as well. The key question always is, what support will New York State provide to schools? And in addition to that, will there be an aid reduction? Has been, has been discussed. And if so, how large? So we have all of these factors related to our instructional model that relate to things like transportation and maintenance as well. The fiscal model, how will that look? And again, it creates a great deal of uncertainty in terms of the budget development process. What path we take, what direction we take. But to put some semblance to that, as mentioned in a previous meeting, the district is preparing multiple scenarios of a role or a budget to assess the potential impacts of a best case, worst case, or in-between scenario. In short, we'll be trying to develop a realistic budget model that has key cost and revenue components based on varying models of instruction that can be shifted in and out to provide a flexible and adaptable structure for budget development. And that's going to be key going into next year's conversation on the budget. Certainly, this will be a challenge. It will, as it will likely be several more months before we have a clearer sense of the impact of the vaccine on our daily lives and what schools may look like next fall. So with all that being said, we're going to be doing work on the budget. We're going to be doing a lot of our traditional work around enrollment projections, class sizes, and things of that nature. Also, our fixed costs, salaries, benefits, and so on and so forth. The hard part is going to be fitting it into whatever model we might ultimately land in for instruction and then all of the fiscal uncertainty around that. So again, the key phrases here, I think for us, flexible and adaptable. So if we can have some components that we can figure out that if we go in this direction, it's likely to mean this. If we go in a different direction, it's likely to mean that. And have that model ready to go and be able to shift as needed to be able to accommodate that. I think that's going to be the plan for the coming months as we try to develop the 2021-22 budget. And I can take any questions if anybody has any. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next on the agenda, we have the consent items. This includes the minutes from the November 10th meeting, the CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and along with the financials there. Can I have a motion to approve this? Barb, second. Blanca? All in favor? I, it passes 9-0. Next is information items. And this curriculum and instruction information, Dr. Singleton?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Well, we have Dave Austin here, so I should have him read this off tonight. But I am happy to share with you, the following Gilderland varsity fall teams have qualified for the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Teams. And just a reminder, to receive Scholar-Athlete Team recognition, the team's average GPA must be greater than or equal to a 90. The teams recognized for the fall season are Boys Cross Country, Girls Cross Country, Field Hockey, Boys Golf, Girls Golf, Boys Soccer, Girls Soccer, Girls Swimming and Diving, and Girls Tennis. In addition to the Scholar-Athlete Team recognition, total of 135 Gilderland athletes qualified as individual Scholar-Athletes. And again, to receive individual Scholar-Athlete recognition and they receive a PIN, the athletes must again earn a 90 or higher GPA. So congratulations to these teams, our athletes, the coaches, on these special accomplishments and thanks. And of course, go Dutchman. And thank you, Dave, for sharing with us. And my next agenda item, this has been discussed previously and I know many of you have taken the opportunity to take a look at our, our fall theatrical production. This is called Alone and Together. And it is a two-act play of monologues written and performed by GHS students. The first act is about the theme of alone and the second act is about the theme being together. Monologues were either pre-recorded at home, on the stage, or performed live on the stage. This amazing production can be viewed by going to the link that I have shared with you. And I definitely want to thank Mr. Maycock for his guidance and innovative spirit. I also want to recognize and thank the many students who wrote and submitted monologues as well as our students who performed them. And I cannot help but think that the show must go on and indeed it did. So thank you to all involved. And my last item tonight. At GHS, we have a very dedicated and active coalition of staff and students who have developed and promoted a strong anti-racist mission at our high school. Under the leadership of Dr. Amy Heralcheck, this coalition has identified several essential arms of their work. And they are curriculum analysis, instructional support, policy review, community connections, and professional development. Additionally, they have written a clear and purposeful mission statement. And this has been developed to guide their work and I'd like to share it with you. So the mission statement reads, "We purposefully strive to be an anti-racist school community. We, the students and staff of Gilderland High School, commit to an active and earnest pursuit of anti-racism. We seek to challenge and dismantle racist ideology in our classrooms, school, and community at large. We will support the education and advocacy of anti-racist ideology." Oh, I already read that one, sorry. "We are determined to foster and promote a more inclusive school environment where the entire school community feels safe, heard, and secure on the basis of race. And we hold ourselves and our community accountable to challenging racism." In recent weeks, this high school team has also produced a series of videos to promote and share this powerful mission statement with the entire school community. I encourage you to take a few moments to watch and to listen if you have not done so already. We are very proud of this team as they stand up against all forms of racism, discrimination, hate, and prejudice. And the links to all of the videos shared during the school broadcast are there for your viewing pleasure as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Singleton.
You're welcome.
Oh, Barb, did you have a comment? Do you have your hand raised? Muted.
You're muted, Barbara.
Are we muted?
Yeah. I just wanted to ask, on those links, they don't take you directly to the YouTube or whatever. And when you type in like the Vimeo one, I wasn't getting any traction at all with them. Is there a different way of posting them?
Well, they appear to not be hyperlinked on the portal for some reason. I don't know if the hyperlink was lost. But if you just copy and paste it and then put it in the URL box, the Omni box at the top, you can go directly to it. So copy and paste the link and then you can go straight to it. I'll see if I can get it fixed. I don't know why the hyperlink didn't carry over, but apparently it did not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, superintendent information, Dr. Wiles.
Thanks, Dr. Rivera. Before I start my first item, I just want to point out that in the course of approving the consent agenda, the board accepted the resignation of Amy Heralcheck, Dr. Amy Heralcheck, who is leaving us to take on a new professional opportunity at Tech Valley High School. And I just want to recognize her for her wonderful work here in Gilderland and wish her well in her new endeavor. Later in the agenda, she will be appointed to our Equity Committee where she will stay as a parent and community member. But I just wanted to highlight that because sometimes things go by fast in that consent agenda. So a less happy topic. My first topic is around required COVID testing. I'm just going to start by saying that this is a evolving topic. And when I wrote these words on Friday, they're somewhat different even now. But New York State has created a microcluster initiative where regions of the state are designated yellow, orange, or red. And they're based on the prevalence of the COVID-19 in those areas. And each zone designation comes with various restrictions for business gatherings and of course, for schools. Our region is not yet designated with a color, but I am certain it is coming. It's a matter of when, not if. And it will be our goal to stay open for in-person instruction and learning as long as it's safe and it's permitted by the Department of Health. But to do so, we're going to have to do a certain percentage of testing of all of our in-person students, faculty, and staff over a given period of time. And those are the things that are changing constantly. Right now, we are anticipating, we're heading to an orange zone and that we would have to test 20% of our in-person faculty, staff, and students over a month period. But there's a lot of confusion in some of the guides that we have, so we're working on that. And then our ability to stay open would depend on having a lower rate than the community around us. So we're working with CAP Region Boses, who's been a great partner with us and all the area school districts, as well as Albany County Department of Health, to prepare our own testing plan to meet the state's requirements. We are preparing right now a consent form that we'll be sending to all of our employees and all of our families, probably on Thursday or Friday of this week, asking for consent to participate in our testing program. And then eventually, once we have a designation and we know what that designation is, we will be randomly selecting 20% of those who consent to participate in the testing. And the testing that we're looking at is, as we described in a recent communication to our faculty, staff, and families, is minimally invasive. I know many of us have heard horror stories of the swabbing that is quite invasive, but that is not the method that we would use. We have a couple options that we're exploring. One is the swabbing of the, of your nostrils, but with a small Q-tip-like item that is really the front of your nose. And the other is pool testing, which is another possibility that we might be able to tap into. So just today, I had our team working on what could this look like? How do we best plan for it? How do we make this disrupt as little, this little disruption as possible? So I just wanted the board and our community to know that we're working on this. And we will continue to- and we will continue to send out information and more directions to our families and employees in the coming days. So I'll leave it with that and say, what questions do you have? And do my best to answer them as this continues to unfold.
I have a question.
Sure, Rebecca.
So the consent form, is it an opt-in or an opt-out? Meaning, do you have to opt-in to have your child tested?
Actually, it's, the form will look like our attestation forms in the morning, and you can say, "I consent," or "I do not consent."
And what if the null would be, you would not test if they didn't submit anything?
If they didn't submit anything, we wouldn't test, because obviously, we need parental consent before we would do that.
And then I-
Go ahead.
I have one more question. The 20% number, is it 20% of school building? 20% of a grade? 20% of an age? Or is it 20% total?
It's 20% by building, to the best of our understanding, of faculty, staff, and students.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions? Blanca?
What happens if we don't reach 20% of folks saying yes, consenting yes to testing?
Well, if we can't test 20%, or if we fail to test 20%, we have to close.
I know that. I just wanted it to be said.
Some of our neighbors have already sent out their consent forms and have had terrifically positive responses. So, you know, I'm never going to generalize from one to the next, but it looks like there is a strong feeling for us to test so we can stay open. And I think you saw that sentiment, not necessarily about testing, but in our thought exchange, how strongly families felt about having access to our in-person schooling, which I know right now is a challenge.
Marie, I just had a question about, I guess this has to do with the letter that we got from the special ed teachers.
Sure.
And I know that you got it earlier, and I don't know if you had probably heard about it earlier, but are you considering at all to have 7 through 12, or just the high school be remoted all before the break? Like, I can understand the risk of being quarantined and then having to be quarantined, like, over the holiday break.
You know, I'm not planning on it, but every day is a new, you know, set of circumstances. And we will go fully remote, as we already have at the high school, should we not have the capacity to cover all of our classes. And I think the letter writers are on target that, right now, we are, you know, we're stretched, and I'm not sure we can stretch further. But I don't, I'm not prepared to say we're going to close, even while we still can continue to serve students in person. But that could change tomorrow, honestly. But at this time, we're trying to stay open. But, you know, again, it could change tomorrow. Barbara? You're mute, Barbara.
In the body of the letter, they mentioned that there were only, like, two or three kids in class, and most of them were remote. But over the course of the summer, which is kind of the intermediary between the board and the special ed community, the parents really wanted the kids to be in school. So are those 26 kids that are remote, are they the special ed kids? Or are they just the regular kids whose parents have chosen not to have them be in school?
Well, right now, I would say it's a mixture of things. So there are some classes that have eight, nine, 10 children in person. There are others where there are fewer. Because of the number of quarantines that are in process right now, we do have a number of students who are temporarily remote. So that does shift the balance to more remote instruction. But at the same time, we've also made arrangements for our self-contained students with disabilities to come to school every day, because it's so important for them to have that regular contact. And I'm not sure if you knew this, but when we did go fully remote in the high school, I think, two weeks ago, we continued to stay open for our self-contained students. And our goal is to try to expand that into the second semester. I know there were comments in the letter, which I will need to reread more closely. But we recognize across the district that providing interventions to students who struggle is a challenge in our current model. So one of the reasons why we asked families to make a selection for remote or in-person for the new semester so early is because it gives us a big chunk of time to really rethink how we have group students, how our schedule works, so that we can maximize support and interventions for our students. I'll just remind everyone that the schedule we have today is one that we put together in about three weeks in August. And it's not perfect, by any stretch. So we want to use this opportunity to really do better in the second semester. Because it is, it's a challenge. There's no two ways about it. I think Gloria, and then Barbara again?
Yes, I was curious, Marie. Had the special ed teachers reached out to the district, to the administrators regarding their concerns before the letter? Like, were you aware of these concerns? Or, you know, has communication been going on with them, especially as you look forward to next semester regarding scheduling? Were you aware of the issues?
Well, we've been doing stage one of our budget process, where we ask all of our administrators, "How are things going?" And as I mentioned a minute ago, we're hearing across the board that providing additional supports, whether it's reading, ENL, special education, some of our related services, it's just particularly challenging for a whole variety of reasons. So we're, we have heard that concern. I have heard the request about building in a day every week where we're fully remote. We really can't do that. To do that, we would not meet the minutes of instruction requirements in order to get aid. So I know there are some districts who have tried that, and it has caused some problems. And State Ed has generated multi-page memos about how you count student learning time in order to make sure that we have a way to document all of student learning, both synchronous and asynchronous. So that's not really an option. But are there other ways we can structure time, second semester, in order to increase the level of support we give to students with disabilities, and frankly, all students? And just to kind of tie in, one of the first letters that Dr. Rivera read about the timing of the high school, we would love to adjust that. Having our students end at 4:20 is not ideal on 100 different levels. But in order to, so long as we are obligated to keep that six-foot social distancing structure in place, we have to have all of those tiers of, we have to spread children across buildings and all of those tiers of transportation. And really, there isn't a physical way to do it, given the constraints of our buildings, our classroom sizes, the geography of our district, and where our buildings are located. All of these things play into the structure we have here in Gilderland that'll make it different than Bethlehem, or Niskayuna, or Shenandoah. So we're working within those constraints. We're going to try to get it better for September, for February 1. And frankly, going back to Neil's comments, and hopefully be back to some kind of normal in September.
I guess my hope is that all your work and all your thinking is somehow being communicated back to the staff that they realize you are working on these issues. You know, it sounds like they're putting it out there, and I'm wondering if they understand that these are things that are being thought about, and maybe they could somehow get involved in the problem-solving in some of these things.
So we do have our reopening, we have to rename it now, I think, our reopening steering committee, which includes faculty, staff, PPS. You know, it's 25 people. We still meet every Thursday afternoon, and we're talking about everything. And there is nothing discussed in that meeting that is, you know, not shareable with peers and colleagues. So I encourage people to talk with their representatives who are on that committee. And, you know, we appreciate seeing the letter, and we, you know, we're working on this. It's important to us.
Thanks.
Blanca, I think Barbara, then Blanca.
This is just a quickie, and a follow-up to my prior statement. At the beginning of the school year, when we weren't dealing with all the quarantining and, you know, lack of staff because of that, did most of the special ed students choose to be in school? Or did they choose remote?
Damian, do you know off the top of your head what the breakdown is?
So it was actually, we shared the data with you in the State of the District presentation a couple of weeks ago. And interestingly, special ed students were in-person at a higher rate than other subgroups. So most of our special ed students opted to come back for in-person. Of course, there are exceptions to that, but it was the majority.
Well, thank you for that, because that sort of reinforces what I had been hearing. So glad to hear that they followed through.
Yeah.
Blanca, did you have?
Thank you. So the way I read the letter, it seems that they're asking the board specifically for two things. And so is that something that we actually can decide? Or is that not something that's up to the board to decide? Because I don't see us headed in the direction of a vote. Either way, I would like to say, as a public health professional, that those concerns that they have about the spike and the type of contact that they have with their students with that very specific population of students, I think their concerns are valid. But either way, I just wanted to see, or we, I feel like we've been asked two specific things, and I would hate to leave the meeting without addressing those two specific things, if that's up to us to decide.
I have to go back to the letter. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if we could, you know, the details enough of the schedule and whatnot, but I agree, Blanca, that, you know, the approach, I guess, the break and the number of cases. I've heard from, you know, different, I guess, faculty or staff that are concerned, and I guess feel kind of anxious about feeling comfortable in school. So, you know, I don't know if that can be worked on within this group that Marie talked about on Thursday afternoons. Barb, did you have something to say?
I just think, in this particular situation, it'd be almost like the board micromanaging the administration. They're on the ground. They see it from day to day. And, you know, they certainly can ask for some of our feedback. But I don't think we, at this point, should be passing a resolution or anything without having all the details and knowing all the intricacies that are involved in all this decision-making.
Right. And again, I was asking, because I don't, I don't know if it's up to us or if it's up to the, up to Marie and Damian. I just didn't want to leave them hanging, because they wrote a letter to us.
Barbara? Oh.
There are two specific requests, were requests to consider allowing GHS to transition to remote only, and to consider changing the schedule for the second semester to provide a day each week for one-to-one support. You know, through the administration, we are considering those options. And to the extent that they're feasible, we're going to provide more support. And to the extent that it's not feasible, we can't. I don't see them asking for a vote here.
Yeah, I think they asked for the considerations. We just talked about it. I think we expressed our concerns to the district, and it sounds like that they're going to be taking them into consideration. And I guess, like Dr. Wiles said, the situation changes every day. So it could happen. I also have to remember that, I'm not saying that they're not speaking for a large group, but we, you know, I don't think we can just make decisions like that without really hearing from, you know, the whole community. Not just, you know, we get one letter and then make a decision based on that.
One of the things I was thinking about is, if we made the decision to go remote for one group of teachers, what would that mean for other groups of teachers? And so that's what I, why I was asking. You know, it could very much turn into, well, this particular group of teachers is making this request, and then another group of teachers is making a request. So it could sort of set a precedent for things to come. And so I didn't know if that was a discussion we were going to have or a vote we were going to have. So, thank you.
So Blanca, just to address that point, we currently have some groups of teachers who are working remotely. It's based out of the actual need to quarantine, or, as in the case with Gilderland Elementary, who's returning to in-person tomorrow, the staffing shortages that happen. So there has been an event for each of the closures where we looked at our capacity and said, "We can't do this safely." So I will say that I never want to put our faculty, staff, and students in harm's way. So if a Mike Piscatelli, or an Alan Lockwood, or Michael Lester, or any one of our principals says, "I can't do this safely," we'll pull the plug in a minute. And we have, you know, GES, Westmere 5th Grade on a dime last night in the high school in the past. So we are honestly 24/7 thinking about, "How is this going to go?" And then the other piece, the number, the number two of the request, I don't think, as stated, that kind of change can be done without jeopardizing about 25% of our state aid, which we just can't do at this time. But are there other ways for us to enhance the supports we provide to students with disabilities? Absolutely, we'll look, we'll work at that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was a thoughtful discussion. I'm sure they're listening attentively. And just for the record, as anti-COVID as I am and as overprotective as I am, I actually do really think, Marie, that you and all of your administrators are doing an excellent job. So I am not fearful for our student population in any way. I think that all the decisions you've made, though different than mine sometimes, because I'm overprotective and overcast, that, that have been right on the money. So I congratulate you all for that.
Thanks, Blanca. Appreciate that very much. All right, well, here's for a segue. I have invited Dave Austin to join us tonight, because kind of on the other end of the continuum are the group of families that we have who want more opportunity to be in school and to engage in more traditional usual activities in winter. And this falls under the category of offering of winter sports. So we have kind of three areas that we are continuing to think about and plan for and strategize about, all with safety in mind. And they are indoor track, which is a moderate-risk winter sport that, right now, is in limbo because there are really no places to practice indoors or to compete indoors. And then there are high-risk sports that have not yet been approved, basketball, wrestling, hockey, and I always- basketball, wrestling, hockey, and I always forget the fourth one, Dave.
Competitive cheerleading.
Competitive cheer, no matter where I start, I forget the fourth one. So that's another topic we just want to get on the board's radar. And then the last piece is some interest in having indoor off-season conditioning opportunities for some of those sports. So can our basketball players come in, lift weights, do drills in the gym? So with that as introduction, I've invited Dave to make a return appearance to maybe flesh out those date details a little bit and answer any questions that you might have as a board about that.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. And it feels like yesterday that I was in front of you trying to convince you all that we could do fall sports safely in the middle of a pandemic. And I guess I'll start there before we segue into the discussion items. And because I think it's important just to kind of highlight what worked because we really had a successful fall season. You know, we screened, the question of what worked, I mean, we screened our athletes and coaches and spectators daily. We stuck to the guidelines of two spectators per athlete at our, at our games. And to do that, we, we used badges and the spectators had to show their badges upon arrival and complete the screening. We were very diligent with our masks. We had soccer and field hockey players wearing masks during games and did so, you know, really well. I mean, that was, I think, one of the things that, you know, I know I worried about was, you know, having masks on during, you know, some of these competitive situations. But they did a phenomenal job, our cross-country runners, although they ran in cohorts, which, which means when we, when we were scheduled to go up against another school, the other school was there at the meet, but we, we ran in separate races and merged the times. And the rationale behind that was, you know, if there was a sport where you might see an athlete, you know, remove the mask during a competitive situation, you know, cross-country was right there at the top, just given it, you know, how, how much of a cardio respiratory activity it is. But despite being in a cohort, I could tell you right now, Gilderland, nobody did it better than Gilderland. So kudos to our coaches and runners despite being, you know, cohort only. They kept those masks on and they did a phenomenal job. We leaned on our parents to help with transportation and they came through in a big way. All of our kids got to where they needed to be, whether it was for a practice or a game. You know, so it was, it was a very successful fall season. And not everyone went forward with low and moderate risk sports in the fall. Many leagues decided to push, you know, their field hockey, their soccer, their cross-country and other sports to March. You know, and I, I think the suburban council did an incredible job. No outbreaks, no hospitalizations as a result of our fall sports season. Outside of a few quarantines because of contact tracing in school, it was super smooth. So before I segue into the winter, I just want to say a big thank you to the coaches, the athletes, the parents, our athletics secretary, Lisa Slusars, our trainer, Kate Galries, our chaperones, our transportation department, our facilities department, our administration, and last but certainly not least, our Board of Ed for their support in making the fall season happen. So now we turn our attention, hard to believe, it's December 8th. We're turning our attention to the winter season, which is why I'm here tonight. And I want to start just by providing you with a brief summary of where things stand. Some of it'll be repeated information from Dr. Wiles' introduction, but we are set to begin low and moderate risk winter sports on Monday, December 14th. And those sports at Gilderland are boys and girls cross-country ski, varsity gymnastics, varsity bowling, and varsity boys swimming and diving. All of those sports have received authorization from New York State to begin and have received authorization from the Gilderland Board of Education to begin. So that is set to start on, on Monday. As Dr. Wiles mentioned, high-risk winter sports and indoor track have a target start date for January 4th. And those sports are boys and girls basketball, wrestling, ice hockey, competitive cheer, and as mentioned, indoor track. But it's important to note that the New York, New York State has not authorized the starts. Although we have a target start date, we have not been authorized yet by the state, by NISFA, by Section 2. And obviously, we haven't had a chance, you know, as a, as a district and as a Board of Education to, to authorize these sports as well. So New York State has authorized indoor track to start as it, as it is a low and moderate risk sport. But as Dr. Wiles mentioned, the tricky part, you know, is, is, is in our area in Section 2. And that's going to segue into our first discussion item. And I kind of want to emphasize that I think the goal for tonight is to just hold a discussion. I'm not here requesting a vote at this time for indoor track or for high-risk sports. But given that it is December 8th and we could potentially be weeks away from the start of some of these sports, you know, I thought it was a good time, we thought it was a good time to, to open it up for discussion. So we'll start with indoor track. As I mentioned, we do have authorization from the state to begin, but it's tricky for Section 2. And Section 2 came out last week and delayed the start of indoor track to January 4th, giving school districts some more time to plan and make a decision. But what makes it tricky is our indoor track program has, you know, competed in meets indoors on the campuses of Union, in the facilities of Union, Hudson Valley and U Albany. And we do not have permission at this moment to, to participate in meets on their, in their facilities. So it leaves the question, how do we go forward with an indoor track season if we don't have a schedule? And I know our indoor track coaches are chomping at the bit. They are super creative, they are hardworking and they're willing to do whatever is necessary to give our athletes some semblance of a season. I can tell you that our signup early indications from our signup lists indicate that we have well over 100, 120, 130 athletes that have signed up for indoor track. So there's a, there's a large interest, obviously. I could tell you that they just wrapped up a voluntary off-season outdoor activity on the track today. And they're getting, they're getting good numbers at those activities as well. So, you know, we've had some discussions with our indoor track coaches and we, we've kind of tried to brainstorm, well, what could an indoor track season potentially look like if we don't have facilities to compete in meets at? And really, we, we're talking that, you know, we'd have an indoor track season under the following conditions. We'd be running an indoor sport, I'm obviously running an indoor sport inside in the middle of a, of our current COVID landscape with over 100 runners is going to be challenging, if not impossible. You know, indoor track is traditionally run in the hallways. There's lots of kids, obviously, if there's lots of kids in the hallways, we don't have as good of ventilation as we did, obviously being outdoors. And there's layers upon layers of sanitation issues. So the parameters would be that we'd be outside almost at all costs for an indoor, for a sport that's traditionally been done indoors. You know, we have a track with lights, you know, we have parking lots. I think those are, you know, those are the two areas that our, our coaches would utilize the most. As far as a competitive schedule, we have other schools currently discussing the idea of indoor track season. Schools like Shenandoah and Mahonason have probably shown the most interest, but there are other schools that are kicking the idea around. So I know our coaches have put together a plan to do virtual track meets outdoors, you know, on our outdoor track. You know, and, and basically we would schedule it. Each, each week we'd have a meet and the schools would have the week to get whatever events they could get in done. And then scoring would be merged, obviously virtually, online. You know, so that is, you know, that's, that's, that would be how it would be done for the competition. But moving a sport that has traditionally been indoors to outdoors will present its fair share of challenges. It's great that we have a track with lights, but what happens when, you know, the first snowstorm hits and that track is covered? And the track isn't cleared. I know, you know, we've talked to our facilities department and we've talked about maybe ways that we can get some of the snow off the track, but it wouldn't be all of it. So, you know, obviously that is, that's a concern. You know, with a 4:30 dismissal, if we're not on the track under lights, where else are we practicing? Likely it's, it's parking lots. And, you know, you know, if you're, if you're around our campus after departure, it's dark on campus and that can present some, some challenges as well. So I'm not saying this, this isn't doable. It's got its fair share of challenges. You know, and I'll repeat, we're not, we're not requesting a vote at this time, but thought that this would be a good time to open it up to the board for discussion. And so that's what I'll do and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have as well about indoor track. Barbara? You're up, there you go.
Yeah, this is a question more so about the, whether considered the high-risk sports. Could you explain to us why basketball, where you have 10, 12 people plus, you know, coach and maybe an assistant coach in a huge, large gymnasium with a lot of airflow, is considered high-risk? Whereas I can understand wrestling, but if you're talking about touching equipment gymnastics, you know, the kids are all touching the horses, the parallel bars and all these other kinds of things. So of all the sports that I don't understand why they're considered high-risk is basketball. Could you share what you athletic directors talk about?
Sure. I think being indoors, I think is, 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 you know, concern number one for basketball as to why, why it was labeled, you know, a high-risk sport. Because I think you're right, I think there's similarities between basketball and soccer and soccer we're able to do in the fall. But basketball, we're moving indoors and on a smaller playing surface. And I think that presents some challenges. As far as gymnastics, I think you're right, there's some sanitation concerns that we have to have a really good plan for. Fortunately, the, the facilities that are doing gymnastics now locally have, have, have found some, some, some things that work and we're going to model our, our cleaning off of that. But I think, I think gymnastics, you can, it lends itself to promote distancing more maybe than basketball. Even though it's 10, 10 kids on a court, you know, they're in close contact for, for the majority of that game and it's indoors. I think that's got to be probably the biggest factors in, in why it was labeled, basketball was labeled a high-risk sport.
Well, the only thing I was thinking, if they have masks on, just like the runners, which we never thought could keep their masks on, I would, I would just like to see that sport moved up. Because for me, it just doesn't seem to make all that much sense. Yes, there is contact under the boards, but, you know, if they're masked up and they're, they're in this huge gymnasium, as I said, with a lot of airflow, everything that we hear about spread of COVID is at least 15 minutes of confined, small space, you know, interaction. And I, I just don't see that happening on a huge basketball court. But that was my question. Thank you.
Sure. Blanca, do you have a question? You're on mute, Blanca, sorry.
It's less of a question and more of a comment for Barb, actually. With, so I guess I see basketball as being more dangerous because you're sweating on each other indoors and it's 10 minutes within six feet of distance for 10 minutes or more, not 15. So I'm just trying to answer your question as well, Barb. I could see why it would be labeled, in my mind, I consider it to be higher risk. I don't, it's interesting because I didn't see track as being very risky, to be honest with you. So I don't know, I don't really have that many concerns about, about track. I think your ideas sound good. You can do your meets virtually and then merge the scores. So I don't know, I think that sounds like a pretty good plan.
The worry is the outdoors nature of the training. So if it snows, we'll be on the track. How do we clear the track safely? If they're running in the parking lot, what if there's ice? It's, it's more about a safe place to practice and compete. It's just, you know, January and upstate New York is not forgiving usually. That, that's the worry that we're hearing from, you know, our colleagues around the region.
And just to clarify, Dave, you said that indoor track currently, right, is not approved or whatever by the state?
No, it is approved by the state. Section 2, Section 2 made the decision to delay the start of the indoor track season to January 4th with, with obviously, you know, facilities in limbo, schools kind of struggling with, you know, how are we going to make this work? You know, what, what, what's the plan going to look like? They wanted to kind of give, give schools some more time on that.
So there's no, there's no space, obviously, to, to practice indoors. But you said there was like 120 students on there. How, what, what are their opinions about being outdoors?
Well, that's a great question, you know, and I want to note that our coaches started last week holding voluntary off-season non-contact activities, very similar to what, you know, our football team has been doing outdoors in the fall. And so they're outside for that. It's not particularly warm. We don't have snow on the ground yet, but it's, it's not particularly warm. And they're getting 60, 70-plus kids out there for these optional off-season workouts. And I know, you know, we looked at that signup number and I know when Dr. Wiles and I were talking about it, you know, it was like, you know, wow, there's a, there's a big interest here. And, and, you know, this could be a sport that we have to shift them outdoors, which we're talking, they're running when it's dark out and it's frigidly cold outside. And we still have that many, that many kids signed up. So, and I know our coaches, because many of the athletes that are signed up are also our cross-country, our cross-country runners. So I know our coaches have kind of, you know, telling them, you know, what, 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 what we could expect for an indoor track season? What can indoor, indoor track season potentially look like in the middle of a pandemic? So we have a large number of interested kids, that's for sure. Kelly?
Hi, thanks. On top of the obvious, I assume, you know, I'm assuming there'd be some kind of limit to temperatures and windshields and things like that, like written down someplace. So everybody wants to go outside and do it, but it may not be like the effect that has on them, you know? So I just think that there'd be something like that that's considered.
Sure. And our coaches would follow, NISFA's got guidelines on windshield. So, you know, they know it's outs, it would be, if we got, if we got the green light to do this, it would be outside unless we can't be outside. And, and from there, it would either be practices canceled for, for the day or we're, we're looking to try to be creative.
Great. I'm glad there's some kind of standard.
Ben, did you have your hand up? Sorry.
Yeah. I just, I just thought I'd throw out, you know, U Albany won't let us use their dome, but maybe Afrim will loan us one of their domes. You know, I know that they're, they're booked at night, but, you know, with the high school starting, you know, later in the day, obviously, you know, the school probably couldn't pay for the dome and we couldn't maybe provide transportation to the dome. But I mean, other sports that we have are having booster clubs, you know, pay for practices at the dome. So, you know, my, my thought is just that, you know, there, there might be some community partnerships here, you know, that, that could help us, that, you know, that, that could help these coaches besides just, you know, going out to the parking lot where they go forward.
Any other questions or thoughts for Dave? All right, well, it's yet another challenging landscape. But we do appreciate your comments and thoughts. Gloria, your hand is raised there. Did you have a question? I guess not.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
My computer ran out of power, so I had to switch over to the iPad. I was just curious, is probably an easy answer to this, but you can't move the season like a little further out so that the weather maybe is not an issue? But is that because you conflict with other sports seasons?
Yeah, great question. And, you know, I, I know, you know, NISFA does not want to overlap seasons. And I know that we've already pushed football and volleyball from the fall to March 1st. So. Um, so, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think there's interest there in, in, in possibly putting kids in a position where they've got to choose, um, you know, from a mul, from mul, because you've already got some schools. Like I said, the suburban council was one of two conferences that went forward with, you know, soccer, field hockey, with all of the sports that we could. So some of these schools, they've, they've moved soccer, field hockey, cross-country to March 1st as well as football and volleyball. So the time, the timeline that I'm told that we have for our winter season is we've got to pretty much be wrapped up at the end of February for those, for those reasons.
What are, what are the later seasons? Couldn't they swap? Like, could they be?
So you've got, you've got, so fall 2 is, is, is slated to begin on March 1st, and then we go right into a, a spring season on April 19th. And the spring teams, that's a later start than they're typically used to. So we've already pushed the spring off.
And they're all, they're all outdoors.
Yeah. So you've already got the, the remaining seasons are already kind of out of order. So.
Yeah.
And Marie, I, I, I know we kind of talked a lot about indoor track. Did we want to briefly talk about the high-risk sports? That was my discussion number two I was going to segue into. I didn't, if we don't have time, I, we can certainly cut it short, but I, I didn't get a chance to do the high-risk or the open gym question.
Well, why don't we just ask the board, do you have any questions about high-risk sports or the open gym concept? Cause I, I know we, we do have a lot of agenda still.
Sure. Gloria, that's you, Gloria.
I know, I know. I'm trying to get, turn it off. I did.
Okay.
I do. Can I just jump in?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Um, can you list the high-risk sports again? And they have not been approved by New York State, right?
Correct. Just to reiterate, the high-risk sports have not been approved. That is the million-dollar question. When will we hear from New York State on high-risk sports? I'm hoping soon so that, you know, obviously there's preparations we have to make. Um, but we have not heard from them. So the sports that, um, that are labeled high-risk are boys and girls basketball, wrestling, uh, ice hockey, competitive cheer. Um, those are the high-risk sports. Um, that would be, um, offered potentially in January, and that is again pending state authorization. And, you know, I don't think as, as a board, we can even really, or, or we should even vote until we hear authorization from New York State. So when is that going to happen? Hopefully soon. Um, but, you know, we could, we might not know until middle or end of December, which obviously makes it even more challenging.
I'm not getting a great feeling about high risks being approved. That's my two cents. I'm happy to be wrong, but I, I don't think they're going to be approved.
Barbara, was your hand up?
Yes. Uh, what was the open gym concept that you alluded to?
Sure. I'll just speak really quickly. So essentially what we're looking for approval on, um, just like we did in the fall with the high-risk sports, um, that were not able to get off the ground, football and volleyball, we were able to offer them, um, off-season, uh, non-contact, masked up, they got to do the screenings, it's socially distant, you know, you know, as, as much as possible. Uh, non-contact, like I said, uh, we did it outdoors. So what we're looking to do is, is give our kids that are, that are hoping to play a high-risk sport, um, like basketball, like wrestling, like ice hockey, um, opportunities to do similar activities, non-contact, masks on, um, socially distant, um, you know, but indoors. And that's something that we haven't yet really discussed or approved. Um, so, you know, essentially they would look like open gyms. They'd be, you know, um, player development, skill-oriented, individual-oriented, uh, activities, conditioning-oriented activities, um, again, non-contact type stuff. But doing them indoors, obviously given that we're in December, um, and, and basketball and wrestling, and, and they need to do their activities indoors. And Blanca, you're raising your hand?
Uh, just to comment, I, I think that could work with, um, I mean, from what I've seen so far, like Coach Tori and, um, he, he puts it up on the Facebook page for the Pine Bush Gym, right? Everybody's got their own square. You're, you have the high ceilings and that's indoors. So I, I, I can sort of imagine a similar scenario. Um, in my personal life, we've been doing those WOD trainings, right? Those HIIT things, myself and my family members, and we've been successfully, uh, conditioning, strength training, and being, we've done 10 feet instead of six. So I feel like it could be successful. Uh, my two cents. I know we're not voting, but I don't get the scary, terrible feeling that I do about some of the other sports.
Sure. And I presented, uh, Marie with some guidelines for what, what we'd be doing indoors. So she, she can share those if she'd like, if she hasn't already. And I also shared there are counterparts in the suburban council. Um, many of them are already doing those type of activities indoors or are starting, um, soon. Not all, but I, I'm looking at my list and the majority are.
Yeah, that conditioning is so important to, to avoid injury once the season starts. So I, I see it as a worthwhile investment if we can make it happen safely.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Dave? All right. Thank you so much, Dave, for coming on tonight. Really appreciate it. Um, it gives us more to think about and plan about, and we can do some more talking.
Sure. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Dave.
That's all you have, right, Dr. Wiles? Those two items?
Okay.
Yes, that's all.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is Board President Information. The first item I have is the charge to the Equity and Diversity Committee. So you can see there, there's a draft charge written. And this is up for information so you can, um, continue to give input. I don't know if anybody has input now or, you know, want to look over to, for the next meeting. The only input I have is that it, um, that some point, you know, the, I feel like the committee should consult or work with the anti-racism group at the high school, just so their efforts can be combined if there is overlap in some, in some places.
Yeah, Seema, that's what I was gonna, not suggest, but I was gonna mention that, uh, it's so in line with what the students are already doing. It's really remarkable. Um, well, maybe it's not remarkable. Maybe we took it a lot from what they already, um, want to do, uh, to make our school more equitable. But I think it's really, uh, a great statement, and I think it's really in line with the student's statement and this teacher's statement that we saw earlier in the, um, meeting. So I like it.
Any other comments? Okay. Next item is the Board, uh, Board of Ed Policy Review. And you have a list of policies to look through. Does anyone on the policy committee want to raise an issue or remind us to look at something specific?
Seema, can I just jump in? Um, there are, uh, a policy, a regulation, two policies and a regulation that if possible, I'd like to request the board suspend the rules. It's 2160, 2160R, and 6700. Those are changes that the policy committee made last time it's met, um, related to an audit of our, um, federal IDEA grants, and we're hoping to send in revised policies to meet the demands of the audit sooner rather than later, if, if, if everyone is comfortable with the changes.
Yeah. So to suspend the rules and vote on 2160, 2160R, and 6700, those three?
That's right.
Okay. Is there, oh, there's Barb. Anyone have an issue with that? Barb, we're going to vote, suspend the rules and vote on three policies? Okay. Can I get a motion then to approve, uh, 2160, 2160R, and 6700? Ben, second Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero. And Barb, any other, um, things you want us to look at under the policies and information?
No, you have a lot there to look at and we'll have a lot more for you soon. Now, the other thing I just want to say totally unrelated to this, my computer keeps going to sleep for some reason. It's never happened before, but if I'm in and out, I'm dealing with that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, action items.
Uh, thank you, Seema. First item this evening is a resolution for the refund of real property taxes. This is a situation where one tax bill from the town of Bethlehem and one tax bill from the town of Gildeland had a clerical error. This will correct those errors and provide a refund to those property owners.
Can I have a motion to accept the application for refund? Second, Barb? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero.
Uh, the next item is a resolution to accept the delinquent tax rules and composite tax collection report. This is a situation that occurs that as we bill for property taxes, school, school taxes, um, not everybody pays. This is typical at the end of the year, and there is an amount that is uncollected at the end of the collection period, which is 60 days. What happens at that point is it gets turned over to the county for them to try to collect. Regardless of whether the county collects or not, the district is made whole in April by the county. So they'll collect what they can and reimburse that to us. Whatever they can't collect, they will turn around and give us back anyway. So we are made whole at the end of the process. And in total, we have 1.35 million in uncollected property taxes as of the end of the tax collection period.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Second, Judy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next is a classroom rental agreement with the Gildeland YMCA to provide school childcare. Uh, the rental rate for the 2020-21 school year is $31,830 for the use of those classrooms.
Can I have a motion to approve the rental agreement? Second, Gloria, any questions?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Barb, did you vote? Oh, sorry. Uh, pass is nine zero.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the Federal IDEA Flow Through Funds Agreement. We have agreements with two schools, and that's Albany County Preschool and Whispering Pines Preschool.
Can I have a motion to approve the IDEA Flow Through Funds Agreement? Gloria, second Barb, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero.
Next item is the recommendation to approve the agreement with Turo College for internship and practical experience for students.
Can I have a, um, a motion to approve the agreement? Blanca, second Rebecca, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next item is a resolution to approve a tax-surcery cost-sharing agreement. And this would authorize the town of Gildeland to retain a designated expert appraiser who is American Valuation Group Incorporated in connection with the Defense of Depending Tax-Surcery Matter of Prosecution Small, and that amount will be a portion between the town of Gildeland and the school district as per our agreement.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Rebecca, second Ben, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next item is a resolution to declare a list of items that you have in front of you, surplus obsolete, and allow me, on behalf of the school district, to dispose of those manners in accordance with Board Policy 6900, which is, in our case, uh, we go out and allow people to bid on those items and receive cash value for them.
Can I have a motion to approve the obsolete property? I don't, second Rebecca, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next item is a resolution to award contracts for Phase 2 of the 2019 Capitol construction voter authorization to the low bidder meeting specifications, and we have a number of them, so I'll just read them off. Uh, contract number seven, which is general construction, and that's recommendation is, that would be awarded to bunk off general contractors. Contract eight for plumbing to Dejesira Group. Contract nine, mechanical, to Tri Valley Plumbing and Heating. Contract 10, electrical, to BND Industries. And contract 11, roofing, to Monahan and Laughlin.
Can I have a motion to approve the bid awards? Moved Barb, second Gloria, any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero.
Uh, the next item is to approve a number of change orders associated with work on Phase 1 of our capital construction project. So we have, uh, change orders that are all for bunk off general contractors. Uh, most of them relate to the installation of the new fuel column down at the bus garage. But also we have one at Farnsworth Middle School and one in Gildeland High School, and those are detailed in your materials.
Can I have a motion to approve the change orders? Judy, second Rebecca, any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next we have a memorandum of agreement with the County of Albany for assistance in the implementation of administering COVID-19 testing of staff and students under the county's Limited Service Laboratory or an alternate limited service laboratory in accordance with New York State Department of Health requirements. And this was mentioned by Marie previously when we talked about the testing protocol for students and staff.
Can I have a motion to approve the MOA with Albany County? Blanca, second Gloria, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is all zero.
Uh, next we have a resolution concerning the Cobblestone Schoolhouse, and I will read the resolution. Whereas the Gildeland Central School District commenced a legal action titled Gildeland Central School District versus Oxford-Cobble LLC, Shirley Hersh and Roder, and John Doe, and Jane Doe, names being fictitious representing the heirs at law and devices of Stephen Van Renssler for acquired title to certain real property located at 479 Route 146, otherwise known as the Cobblestone Schoolhouse. And whereas the school district and respondent Shirley Hersh and Roder and Oxford-Cobble LLC have reached settlement under which respondent Shirley Hersh and Roder and Oxford-Cobble LLC agree that they have no lawful claim to the Cobblestone Schoolhouse, agree that they have filed quick claim deeds which are defective and null and void, and agree not to oppose the school district's quiet title action. And whereas the superintendent of schools and, or council recommend acceptance of the settlement, tier I resolve that the above referenced action be partially settled and discontinued for the recommended terms of settlement as against respondent Shirley Hersh and Roder and Oxford-Cobble LLC. And be a further resolved that the superintendent of schools, board president, and board council are authorized to execute any documents necessary to settle and discontinue the above referenced action.
Can I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Cobblestone Schoolhouse? Judy, second Gloria, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next, I'm pleased to recommend the approval of the formation of the Fazina, Celine, Ismail Memorial Scholarship. This scholarship would be offered to a student who has a passion for volunteerism and philanthropy. Recipient of this award exemplifies compassion toward others, positivity, and a desire to make a significant impact in the community.
Can I have a motion to approve the scholarship? Gloria, second Kelly, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next, I'm also pleased to announce that we've received a donation of supplies to our self-contained special education program from Katie Smith.
Can I have a motion to approve the donation from Katie Smith? Gloria, second Rebecca? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more donation. Waiting for it to load here. Next, we have a donation of money in food from Harkeys Heroes for Kids Incorporated and 7th grader Haley Altshue. Sorry if I mispronounced that. Recently, a flyer was given out asking students who were able to bring in food donations for kids in Gilderland who may not have adequate food supplies when school isn't in session. In June 2020, Haley was one of a handful of volunteers who helped her family start Harkeys Heroes for Kids, 501(c)(3) nonprofit in memory of her grandfather. As a result, they donated $1,000 to adopt two families to the Gilderland High School and donated around 180 food items to be distributed to local children in need. These include dozens of boxes of cereals, oatmeal, cream of wheat, cans of soup, and other items. Equal amount of items were donated to the Schenectady School District as well. So very impressive, very pleased to have that donation to be able to help students and families in our community.
Can I have a motion to accept the donation? Gloria, second Blanca? Any questions? Thank you. Haley Altshue, that's awesome, especially as a student to do all of that.
Beautiful.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Ben, did you vote? Sorry.
Yes, I voted aye.
Okay, pass is nine zero. Thank you. I think we have to go back to the policies briefly. We voted to to suspend the rules, but we didn't actually vote on the policies. So just scroll back up to Board President Action. Apologize. I don't know. Board President Information. And now we're voting on 2160, 2160R, and 6700. Can I have a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
Ben, second Gloria, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass is nine zero. Superintendent Action. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I just have one item tonight, and this is seeking approval from the Board of Education for a memorandum of agreement between the Gilderland Central School District and the Gilderland Teaching Assistant Unit of the Gilderland Teachers Association. And this memorandum of agreement codifies some changes we needed to make to our bargaining agreement based on our reopening plans and the increased role that our TAs are playing with some cohorts.
Can I have a motion to approve the MOA with the TAs? Gloria, second Judy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles.
Thank you.
Next, we have Board President Action. First, we have a set of policies, A through I. Barb, do you want to make any comments about these from Policy before we vote? Oh, where'd you go?
Does anybody, does anybody in Policy know why it's switching from shall to will? Is that a... You know, all of the shaws became wills. I'm not sure. Is there a reason for that? That I don't know.
Well, in the legal world, shall was the default for a very long time. And it became such a default that different regions of the country started using it to mean different things. And so normally, you know, so shall could mean will, it could mean should, it could mean, you know, upon conditions.
That's what I figured. It wasn't as definite as you needed it.
Of course, this all gets mixed up, and it becomes a more ambiguous term. So I still use shall at work, but but Ms. Bud is making the move to will, to be more clear.
Thanks, Ben.
Can I have a motion to approve the policies A through I? Blanca, second Judy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass is eight zero. And next, we have the Equity and Diversity Committee appointments. And on the agenda should be the list of appointments, and I'll read them out. Resolve that the Board of Education appoint the following members to the Equity and Diversity Committee for the purpose of providing direction, support, and oversight for the school district's work to become more diverse, equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist in its policies, practices, and programs. Superintendent Marie Wiles, Board President Seema Rivera, will both serve as ex officio members. For Board of Education members, Barb Fratirigo, Gloria Tollhilt, Benjamin Goze, and Kelly Person. High School Assistant Principal currently is Amy Haralcheck. Middle School Principal Mike Laster. Middle School E&amp;L Teacher Nedra Erway. West Maryland Elementary Library Media Science Teacher Dee Johnson. Community members are Elizabeth Floyd Mayer, Joe Otter, Andrew Genovese. And parents, we have Tipizay Hernandez, Leah Bree, Nicole Aldine, Louis Liu, Sandra Savage. And students, we have Nora Ebersman, Maxine Alpar, Mirzon Gladwick, and Nora Whiteside. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments? Second Rebecca, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is eight zero. Next, we have Board Committee Reports. Start with Communications.
We'll be meeting on, whoops, am I on? Yeah, we'll be meeting on the 14th at 2:30. And I believe we're virtual.
Okay. What about business practices?
Judy, you got to mute.
Yeah. Nothing scheduled.
Okay. And we have Policy.
For Policy, we met a couple weeks ago, and we have, our next meeting is scheduled, if I can find that page. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be the policy person. Meeting is scheduled for January 13th at 8:00 a.m. And we met just, I think, last week and reviewed a bunch of policies that just I'm to make to the agenda today. So those are forthcoming, and the vast majority of them are just keeping updated based on priorities. So.
So we just finished Policy and Audit. Ben?
Audit has not met since our last meeting, and we have no meeting scheduled.
Okay. And I guess after we have this Equity and Diversity Committee meeting, this is where they will also share their reports.
Marie, the draft charge has an inaugural date of December 15th. Is that true, or was that a placeholder?
Well, it's true. The goal was to try to get the committee together before we break for the holidays. So it was, I think, the only evening where, because it's a public meeting, we needed to livestream, so we had to work around a lot of schedules. So the plan is to meet a week from tonight and at least kick it off.
Okay. No one told me that, so you could, I mean, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that that's the plan.
It was in the letter, or you got the letter, right? Or I don't know.
Nobody sent me a letter, so.
Board members didn't get letters. Oh, isn't that terrible?
No, board members didn't.
I don't know why I knew that date. Maybe it was in an email or something. Is it going to be virtual?
Yeah, we're going to be virtual.
Is that okay, Ben?
Yeah, I just, if it was in the letter, that's fine. I just, I wanted to make sure that that had gotten communicated.
What's the timing on that meeting?
I have it at 6:30 in my calendar. I'm not sure where I got that from.
Yeah, I have 6:30, is that right?
That's what I have.
Okay, okay.
But I could have made that up.
No, no.
I have 6:30, too.
Okay, that makes it true.
Next Tuesday at 6:30.
Yep.
And next, public comment number two. Linda, did anybody else send in public comment?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. And lastly, Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing. Does anyone have anything to share? Blanca? You're muted.
Okay. I tried to raise my hand earlier. So there was a gentleman that we had invited to be on the Diversity Committee who then responded that they were no longer interested. Did we ever replace that person?
So we were at 21, because we allowed that other student to be counted. And also Amy's being moved to the community instead of staff. So I think, and Marie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're exactly 20.
Okay. Yeah, we're right. We are at 20 now.
Yeah.
Great.
It just kind of worked out, knocked on wood nicely. Any other ideas or sharing? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is nine zero. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.